This is Peter Pritchard, and I would like to call to order the May 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Planning and Zoning Board, and call upon our PCB Secretary to take an attendance role, please.
Yes, sir. Member Acharya?
Present.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Present.
Sorry. Vice Chairman Langston?
Present.
Member SAC? I didn't hear him. Member Totari?
Present.
Member Michael?
Present.
Member Robuck? Chairman Pritchard?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I just go back to check that Member SAC is still with us.
Present.
Thank you.
Is that heard?
Yep, we heard you. Thank you. So we have a full quorum. We also have a full House of four members, so we do not need to appoint an alternate member as a voting member this evening. We note that Member Robuck, who's an alternate member, is not able to be with us this evening. And we wish her well and hope that she will be able to join us for future meetings. The next item on our agenda is actually the adoption of the agenda itself. And if there are no changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. I see that we have a motion. Excuse me. Air from Sanjay, seconded by Lee. All in favor say aye or indicate aye on chat.
Aye.
Aye.
So Peter was asked that we unmute to call the motion now.
Okay.
I make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I seconded.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Madam Secretary, would you prefer us to also indicate by chat that we have voted?
Um, I am under the impression that I should do a roll call.
Okay, please do.
Okay, all right. So Member Acharya?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Member SAC?
Aye.
Member Totari?
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard?
Aye.
So the motion to adopt the agenda was approved unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, Marty. Move on to item three on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes. And we go back to February. So if there are any changes or additions to the February minutes, please let us know now. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve the February minutes.
I make a motion to approve the February minutes.
I seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, would you like to go through and call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Member Acharya?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston? Did I hear? Vice Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Okay. Member SAC?
Aye.
Member Totari?
Aye.
And Chairman Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes was passed unanimously.
And I believe the member making the motion was Member SAC. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Member Acharya was the seconder.
Aye.
Thank you. So this is one of those fast items that we can move relatively quickly. Item four is presentation, and there is actually nothing on the agenda for this. So we will move immediately to public comment. Did we receive any public comments prior to this meeting by email?
We didn't. Chairman Pritchard?
Thank you, Marty. So that would take us on to item six, which is old business with public comments. Again, there's nothing on that particular item, so we move to seven. Nothing on that item either. And new business with public comment. Nothing on that item this time. So we're going to move to item number nine, which is new business. And at this stage, I'm going to invite Planner Natalie Nye to address the board. Thank you, Natalie. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. This is Natalie Nye, and I will be presenting the 910 Church Street Major Site Plan Agenda Item this evening. Seems to be a little bit of a lag in the presentation. There we go. So the applicant is proposing a neighborhood place of worship at 910 Church Street. You will see the map on your screen outlined in red. That is the property. The neighborhood place of worship will also include a dwelling unit for the religious leader to reside in. That will be within the Neighborhood Place of Worship building. This property is located on Church Street, just north of McCrimmon Parkway and south of Shiloh Park. This is a major site plan due to the use proposed, the Neighborhood Place of Worship, and that is why it is coming before you tonight as an administrative request. The zoning for this property is low-density residential. There is also low-density residential to the north, as well as the PGO zoning district where Shiloh Park is located. To the east and south, we have the Industrial Management zoning district where several industrial businesses are located. We also have the Carolina Railroad further east. Across from Church Street to the west, we have more low-density residential parcels, as well as a medium-density residential development, a town home development. The property, the subject property, is just about three and a half acres. The current land use designation is Heritage Preservation Area. As you all know, the land use plan is currently being rewritten, and it is in that process that has not been finalized yet. But this area looks to be, looks like it will change the land use plan designation to institutional. That has not been finalized yet, but the Neighborhood Place of Worship proposed use would fit in there as well. And this is, there will be two phases as part of this project. The first is the Neighborhood Place of Worship that we are reviewing tonight. The second phase has not been determined yet, and this is within town limits already. This project application was carefully reviewed by staff, not only by the planning department, but also by engineering, stormwater inspections, public works, parks and recreation, fire. And all of these reviewing departments have found that the site plan is satisfactory, and that it meets all of our regulations and codes, including all UDO requirements. So what you'll see on the screen here is the maximum building height, required parking, tree preservation setbacks, lot coverage, as well as open space, all of which have been met by the application, some of which far exceeds what the requirements are. For example, the parking is well. There are 58 spaces proposed versus the only 36 that are required based on the square footage of the building, and as well as lot coverage is well under the maximum. Now I'd like to tell you a little bit of a brief history of the site that was also included in your packet. Several years ago, when this property was looking to be developed, it was discovered that there was a large easement on the property. And that large easement really hindered the development of the property. At that time, all of the property owners, including 910 Church Street and the neighboring property owners, including the town, decided that it would be best to terminate that easement. However, during that process, the Parks and Recreation Department discovered that that easement was really useful for the town to access Shiloh Park, which is just northeast of the site, so that town vehicles could access Shiloh Park from Church Street. So the town decided that they could, in fact, terminate that large easement. If a smaller easement was recorded, that could still allow access for emergency vehicles and town vehicles to access Shiloh Park from Church Street. So that that was agreed upon between the town and the property owner of 910 Church Street. The second part of the history is really based on what you see on your screen right now. That highlighted parcel, or portion of the parcel, rather. That parcel, that portion, is not really utilized by the development of the site and is actually very beneficial to Shiloh Park. Part of the cricket fields, we'll go on to that. We actually lease part of that property right now. So a land purchase agreement for the town to purchase that portion of the property from 910 Church Street was agreed upon back in 2017. So that will be a part of this process as well. Now you should see on your screen the proposed site plan. As you can see, most of the development is on the southern portion of the site where the building, the Neighborhood Place of Worship, is located. We have the entrance drive off of Church Street. Also like to point out that most of the northern portion of the site is a future phase that is shaded. Included in that future phase is the recorded easement, which will be recorded right away for emergency access and town vehicle access to access Shiloh Park. That will be improved at a later phase, however. And then I'd also like to mention the stormwater pond that has been designed to handle both phases. And again, just reiterating that all dimensions and site details that you see on the site plan meet UDO. Likewise, all of the landscaping and tree save meet UDO requirements. You will see the tree save area is just east of the proposed wet pond. All of the buffers, as well as the vehicle use area landscaping and perimeter landscaping around the building have all met our requirements. The next slide will show the elevations. These are just two snapshots of the elevations for the proposed use. Staff has reviewed the elevations, the maximum height, the building materials, fenestration, and all other design elements meet UDO. Additionally, I wanted to mention a few other improvements. Along Church Street, a sidewalk will be installed the entire length of the property, as well as curb and gutter, and that will be the transportation improvements. Again, the cross-access easement that the town is requiring will be improved in the future phase, but recorded before that. Staff is recommending approval of this major site plan because it is compliant with the UDO. Staff is recommending two conditions be placed on that approval. The first is that that cross-access easement depicted on the site plan, allowing access from Church Street to Shiloh Park for town and emergency vehicles, shall be recorded with the county prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Likewise, before the first building permit, staff would also like to recommend that the purchase of the .45 acre rear strip of land on the subject property and all required agreements and easements per the resolution adopted in 2017 shall be finalized. And with that, I will conclude the staff's portion of the presentation for the major site plan for 910 Church Street, the Neighborhood Place of Worship. I would now like to ask the applicant team, we have three members of the applicant team here with us tonight, to unmute themselves, and they can briefly introduce themselves. And then we are all available, the applicant team, as well as myself, for any questions.
We put your team committee members.
This is Jatin Patel, and I'm also the member of the Campbell Committee.
Thank you, Natalie. This is Mark Phillips with Patch Design Group. Good evening, Chairman Pritchard and members of the board. Patch Design Group is the engineer of record for this project, and we are here and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call for anybody who would like to make a comment or question for Natalie or the applicant or the presenter.
Sanjay, I see your question in the meeting chat. I don't know, Chairperson Pritchard, do we want each member to say the comment out loud before I respond?
Sorry, I'm negligent in my duties as chairperson here. So let me call on Sanjay first. Thanks, Sanjay. You had a comment.
Thank you. Chairman, Natalie, my question was, you mentioned that the easement will be used for an emergency vehicle to get to Shiloh Park. So does that mean the tree buffer that currently exists will be taken down and replaced by a road?
That's a great question. No, the tree buffer will stay in place because that is a requirement, and that easement will be right below it. So that easement will be right under the tree buffer. So we'll still have a tree buffer.
Thank you.
I'm going to call on Tim. Tim, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Given the size of what's proposed here, the 58 spaces, I understand that the traffic impact assessment wasn't needed. My question, maybe for Natalie, is do we have insight around what Phase Two will be? And if that does include additional spaces, will that be a cumulative piece of Phase One and Two? And look at it that way to see if it triggers a traffic assessment?
Thanks for your question, Tim. So we do not know what Phase Two is going to be yet, but I can say that we will look at the traffic impact cumulatively for the site. So currently, the first phase with the Neighborhood Place of Worship did not require a full TIA to be completed. But at the time of a future phase being developed, we will look at the site and how many users will come into the site for both potential uses. We will look at that cumulatively.
Okay, thank you.
Natalie, this is Peter Pritchard again. So just to make sure I understand your answer to Tim's question. So if there is a future phase, you would go back and sort of retroactively require the overall development to make traffic improvements if the TIA said it was necessary. Is that correct?
If required.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who would like to make a question or make a comment? So hearing none, I have a few questions for you, Natalie, if I may. The current land use plan designation is heritage conservation. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So do we need to make some reference to the change in the designation? Or is it something that would be classified under Heritage Preservation?
We do not need to reference anything.
So what happened to the Heritage Preservation Area designation?
Well, currently, that's what the land use plan has it, but it's currently being updated. I don't believe that this use, this use is not prohibited in that area, nor would it be in a future land use designation.
Thank you. Have we heard anything from the Shiloh community about this application?
We have not.
Okay. And then if I may continue. The power line will be above ground, is that correct, along Church Street?
There are no above-ground power lines along Church Street, along the frontage of the site.
So how will it get power?
Mark, would you like to answer that question?
Absolutely, yes. So there is one above-ground overhead utility power line that runs almost north and south through the middle of the site. As part of the review process, it was asked for that to be buried underground. So there is underground power or above-ground utilities, power utilities being placed underground. However, just with any use, you know, they can run power underground to service the building. It'll go to a transformer pad, and then from the transformer pad into the building, and so forth. And I would also like to note that we, there are lights being proposed along Church Street as well, streetlights.
So there'll be overhead power along Church Street?
No, sir. It'll be standalone light poles serviced from within the pole.
Yeah, sorry. Where does the power come from? Is the power underground along Church Street?
Let me check real quick. I'll look at the existing conditions plan. We do not have any record of power running under, or under the, in the right of way or anywhere. If there is none on that side of the street, Duke Energy will service that lot as part of their process to serve this use. So if none exists, they will add it.
Right. And, you know, it's always our preference, if possible, to put utilities underground. Sometimes I know there are limitations, but I'm interested to know if you've come across that yet.
Peter, I believe Mark said that it will be serviced from underground.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Natalie.
Yeah. And I would like to add to, Natalie, you may correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if Duke Energy or whoever the power company is in this area proposes any type of utility installation, they do have to go through a review process, I believe, with both DOT and the town. So at that time, I believe in the permitting process to install that, you could dictate if they were trying to put it above ground, you could ask them to put it below ground. But I would imagine they would run it below ground anyway.
Very good. Thank you for those answers. Are there any other board members who would like to make a comment or ask a question? Sanjay, please go ahead.
Thank you, Peter. My, given what we have endured with Duke in the past, I would recommend that we explicitly state that in the approval, that the Duke, you know, but Duke put those power utility lines underground. I would prefer not to leave it at their discretion.
Thank you, Sanjay. I maybe would ask Natalie or perhaps Michelle to make a comment. We might like to make that recommendation, but perhaps it's not something that we can insist on.
If possible, I think Michelle could answer this question best.
Sure. Thank you, Natalie. If I'm understanding correctly, I think that the line that we are talking about is not a main line, and I will ask the project engineer to confirm. It sounds like what we are talking about is a service line to serve the building. There typically are not issues burying those.
Well, I think the issue is, how do you get to the service line? How do you provide service to the service line from the street, from Church Street?
Michelle, this is Mark with Patch Design Group responding to your comment and question. You are correct. That existing overhead utility line that dissects the property is, I'm not sure if it's a transmission line, or I highly doubt it's a distribution line, but that, I'm not really sure what that serves, but it will be placed underground. And to answer Chairman Pritchard's question, if there is not a distribution line in Church Street that the power company would use, that they would need to run a service line from to the use, they would certainly install one. If that overhead electric line that does cross the site now does have the ability to provide service to the site, they could tap into that line and use it as well. They obviously have to run power for their light poles. So I would most likely imagine they would utilize the power line underground to service the light poles, the new light poles along Church Street to serve the building. They would branch off a service line from that.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Yeah, as you can tell, our desire is to have underground utilities on the frontage of whatever development we can.
Understood.
Vice Chairperson Lee, you have a comment. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so it was just unrelated. I was looking at the map of this. I mean, the transmission lines, it looks like they're on the other side of Church Street. In this section there, north, south of this, they are on this side, but then they jump over. And I can't exactly tell where, but And I can't exactly tell where, but so it's, you know, they may have to come across and then maybe they can go down. But yeah, that could be the, because I'm not sure they would go under a bore, under a road for this type of a project.
Good clarification. Thank you. I see Member SAC, you have a question. Please go ahead.
Thank you. The light poles that Mark mentioned, are those only going to run along the frontage of this property? Or are there plans to put those poles, you know, anywhere further north or south of this parcel?
Right now, the light poles will just be running along the front of this property. That is all we can require this development to do. As more developments come along, we can continue to require that they add more streetlights and then the town can also fill in where they need to. But currently, this project will just be doing them along their frontage.
Thank you.
Chairman Pritchard, this is Mark from the Past Design Group. I flipped over to the Duke Energy Plan and Plan Set and looking at their plans. They do plan to do a directional bore from the Grace Point Road and Church Street intersection under to our side of the road and all of the service lines or all of the lines serving the proposed lights are labeled as underground. And so I imagine from that point to our transformer, they'll continue. Obviously, the service line will be underground as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thanks for looking into that. So we're not going to benefit by having any lines put underground and existing lines put underground, but at least there won't be any more added above ground. That's great. Do any other board members have any comments or questions? Hearing none, I would call for a motion.
Peter, I had a couple of questions to the other person.
I'm sorry. Yes, please go ahead, Sanjay.
I have basic, I had two questions. One was, do you plan to have any kind of Sunday classes on the premise? And if so, does that, does that traffic flow, is that traffic flow accounted for in the calculations?
Yes, so this is Jatin Patel. We would not have Sunday classes, but again, we would have the sermon over the weekends and that, and that traffic flow has been counted for. So we are probably looking at over the weekend, no more than about 50 to 70 people. So we are talking about about 25 to 30 families as far as the traffic was.
Okay. And go ahead.
Unless, unless there is an event, right? So when there's an event going on, that could be more traffic. But normally, that's the traffic that we are accounting for right now.
Okay, yeah. So my follow-up question was around the event. As Indian temples, we tend to have a festival per month. So what is the, what is your overflow parking plan, if any?
At the moment, we do not have any overflow parking plan. We would have to, I guess, look into it at that point. I mean, I know there is a Cary Park right across the street and I'm not sure that if that can be used. Now, our neighbor, Brian Industrial, that they are willing to help us for the traffic as well. So they could use his parking lot. That would be really great, I mean, great for us. And he has committed that he would help us if we have an event to have the cars parking his parking.
And just to add on to that, Member Atria, the parking lot satisfies, more than satisfies our requirements for the building. I understand that there could be some larger events that might require that overflow parking possibly throughout the year. But I just want to reiterate that we do have a special events permit that's required through the town and we would verify, staff would, and various departments would verify how to deal with, with if there would be any overflow parking required and how we would treat that and handle that. But on the daily basis, we believe, as well as the applicants believe, that the parking lot is more than sufficient.
Thank you.
So one more time, any comments or questions from any other board members? Okay, before we call for motion, Natalie, do we need to take into account not just the zoning, but the current land use plan designation? Or are we okay with a motion that references the fact that this, this use is an allowable use under the current zoning?
I do not believe you need to reference the future land use map. You can just read the action with our recommended conditions.
Okay. Just to be clear, I'm talking about the current land use plan?
No, and Michelle can chime in if she believes that something needs to be mentioned.
Yes, Chairman Pritchard, the application is for a major site plan only. There is not an associated request for a land use map amendment. Therefore, you only need to act on the site plan.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So is there any member who would like to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Please go ahead, Sanjay.
Sure. Natalie, remind bringing in our T C T C so that I get the right words. I'll go and just read what is displayed.
Yes, just give it a minute. I think there's a little bit of a lag time.
Okay.
I'm trying to get it back to the previous, previous page. There we go.
We need to I'm making motion to approve the proposed major site plan that is generally consistent with the adopted plans and complies with the U D O. Therefore, the, with the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the cross access is when depicted on the site plan, allowing access from Church Street to Shiloh Park for town and emergency vehicles shall be recorded within the county. Prior to the issuance of first building permit, the purchase of 0.45 acres rare strip of land on the subject property and all the required agreements and easement for resolution 2017-239-0 shall be finalized.
Thank you, Sanjay. And just to be sure, I think you're recommending approval.
That's right.
Recommending, right. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second?
Second, Member SAC. Any discussion of the motion on the table? Hearing none and seeing no comments, I call for Adam Secretary, if you would make a roll call with the vote, please.
Member Atria?
I recommend approval.
Yes, I'm calling for the vote. You, okay. Vice Chairman Langston? I'm not hearing him.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Member SAC?
Aye.
Member Toterai?
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard?
Aye.
The motion to approve the major site plan for 910 Church Street was passed unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. And I'd like to thank Mr. Patel and Mr. Phillips for joining us in this high-technology experimental first remote meeting of the Planning and Society Board. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome. And thank you, Chairman Pritchard, members of the board and Natalie for all you've done with this.
All right. Again, thank you, Natalie, for putting all that together. Move on to item 10. And that's staff comments. So I'll call on Michelle, Planning Director, to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Pritchard. Before I talk, I would like to recognize Town Manager Paige, who is here with us this evening. She's prepared to give a brief update about the town's COVID efforts. Manager Paige? Okay, well, hopefully she'll be able to connect with us here in a second.
Michelle, can you?
Oh, are you there?
I think so. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right. I'm sorry. I was talking and had two mute buttons here. Good evening, PZB members. First, I want to say thank you so much for your patience and tolerance as we've tested our metal with learning how to continue to expect the unexpected in doing the service to our community. I think local government is good at that, but we've certainly had a challenge over the couple of months to support the state, the federal, the local efforts to protect our citizens, our residents, our employees, our first responders. And I really want to say that I feel like we've really risen to the challenge. Since the state of emergency began March 13th, we have had a progressive response to the state of emergency, including your own meetings. Closed our town hall. In my 20 years, I've never seen that occur on March 23rd and progressively closed down some of our facilities to continue to safeguard the community and comply with the state of emergency orders. We've been resilient. We've been strong and we have continued to do the work of our community just in different ways. And while I think that there's many of us that would talk about how much we miss each other, we've made it work. We've tried new technology. We've been creative and I feel like we've continued to serve our community. We've done that in some creative ways. Our E O C has been open virtually or in person since the state of emergency began. We set up a community hotline to make sure we were still responsive to questions of people that live and work here. We worked collaboratively with our Chamber of Commerce to make sure that our business community needs have been met. We've attempted to provide proactive education on compliance with the guidelines of the state of emergency and work with many of our partners, which include Wade County and all of the other municipalities in particular, to stay communicating and connected and supportive of each other. I don't think I have attended as many webinars and informational series as I have in the last two months, again, probably in my entire career. As we've continued and I think that we have been responsive to the social distancing and the sanitizing and keeping our employees healthy and well. We are at the phase where we are working in compliance with the governor's phasing plan to look at reopening. We have established our Reconnect Morrisville, which began last Friday with the reopening of some of our parks. We have been working to put together a very comprehensive plan to begin returning people to the work office, not completely and not all at once, but in a progressive manner that allows for some work to be done on-site while we continue to have substantial teleworking and telling commuting. Our facilities were cleaned today thoroughly to provide that safety mechanism and you'll see some things different the next time you come in with sanitizing stations and enhanced cleaning procedures. Our town council chamber, where you typically meet, is now marked for social distancing as we, as we continue to transition from virtual to remote over the next several months. We don't know how long that will take, but we will be responsive to you and to the people in our community. We've learned a lot of lessons. We will continue to prepare as we face new opportunities and challenges to learn and grow from this pandemic experience. I'll speak for myself. I miss seeing people. I miss talking to people, but I've learned that we are really even more flexible and creative than, than what I already gave us credit for. And I include town council and our advisory committees in that, that everybody has done what they continue to do to serve our community at the forefront. So I'm very grateful and appreciative to you and all of the staff that make this job so worthwhile and fulfilling for me in particular. So thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Martha. Really appreciate that overview. And I think all of us on the board know that we have super staff on the town and great leadership. And I applaud you and the staff for the way that you've handled this, this very different situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, would you like to continue?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Pritchard. This is definitely an unusual time indeed. However, in the development world, activity continues to occur. Work continues to happen. I think the workload from the development standpoint has not really changed much since COVID as that construction activity continues. We did see for a few weeks a little bit of a downturn in terms of inquiries for new projects. I think everyone was trying to adjust to what we're all now referring to as the new normal and find different ways to do work. But those inquiries, as of the last couple of weeks, have started coming back in. And we did just have two virtual pre-submitting meetings this week and other applicants in contact with us wanting to schedule pre-submitting meetings for other projects. So while we are all working remotely, we're holding our meetings virtually, even doing some inspections virtually. That work is continuing. That being said, we did not have any new development applications submitted in the March to April timeframe. However, there were three site and construction plan approvals that were granted in that time period. The first one was for the resort lifestyle community. That is a senior living facility that will be constructed at the corner of Town Hall Drive and McCrimmon has 130 units. Also approved subdivision plan for Providence Estates, a small five-lot custom home subdivision up by Providence Place, close to 540. And also approved plans for the Davis Drive Apartments. And also approved plans for the Davis Drive Apartments, which are planned just north of Bethany Village. That's actually, the name is a little misleading. It's actually a mixed use development with ground floor, non residential and 50 apartment units above. Town council meetings like PZB meetings were on hold for a short period of time. So we do, through March and April, there were no town council approvals related to planning items. However, at the town council's meeting this past Tuesday, March 12th, the town council did act on two items. One was an annexation for 601 Airport Boulevard. And in, you'll have to excuse me, public hearings were held on these items. And then the driveway spacing text amendment that you reviewed back in February held a public hearing on that at their meeting last Tuesday. Action on both of those items are slated for the May 26th meeting. In other news, I just want to encourage everyone that if you have not filled out and completed your census, to please do so. It's still that time and there's still time to do that. So anyone listening as well, that's important to the town. If, once again, if you have not completed that, we would encourage you to do so. With the land use plan update, we did receive the first full draft of that update a couple of weeks ago and staff is reviewing that right now. We are also kind of reevaluating the public outreach related to the land use plan. As you may recall, a future land use map had been developed, at least in draft form. We had just started the public engagement on that. There had been a couple of public engagement activities. And then that was all kind of canceled due to COVID. So we are planning on moving forward with the full draft plan, bringing that before the PZB Town Council and the public for input. Anticipate revisions will be made after that and hoping and looking at plan adoption tentatively now in early 2021. I also just wanted to do a little bit of a shout out. The town received what I would consider a pretty significant award. It's a special achievement award from Esri for the use of innovative G I S technology with the land use plan. So you may recall that with the town center sub area plan, we did some imaging to help guide and make some decisions there where you had pedestrian actually kind of walking down the streets so you could get a better look and feel for the different options. What was really done to achieve that was kind of mixing gaming technology with G I S technology. And if it was not the first time it was done, it was one of the very first times it was done. And so this award is actually an international award and something that we are very proud of and just want to thank administration and town council for allowing us to pursue the the use of that technology in that in that imaging. But something that that we are excited about. Otherwise, I really just wanted to wish everyone well. Great to see everyone again and just hope everyone takes care, stays safe, stays well. Thank you, Chairman Pritchard.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm going to take this quick opportunity to thank you and your staff for the way that you've adapted to what you call the new normal and you've helped us through some of the technology, some of us kicking and screaming more than others. At this time, I'd like to ask each member if they have any board comments to make and we'll start with Sanjay.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to say congratulations to the team for the award. You deserve it. And I also want to wish you all stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanjay. Vice Chairperson Langston.
The only comment I have got is a question about the Shiloh Greenway closure and the apartments, and it may be better to just to talk with Michelle separately. I'm just wondering what the status of that was, reopening it.
Michelle, you got it?
Go ahead, Manager Paige.
Vice Chair Langston, I'm really very pleased to let you know that the Greenway has been reopened. It was, I believe, April 29th. The the they cleared their equipment to allow for it to be reopened. We've periodically monitored it since it is still very near a construction site, but it's open and ready for your use.
Excellent. Thank you. That was it and stay safe everybody.
Thank you, Lee. Tim.
Sure, just echo the appreciation, the staff for getting us all connected through this medium and allowing us to help move things forwards. Really do appreciate that. Thanks.
And Josh.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff as well. And yeah, hope everyone stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And on the G I S award, congratulations to the staff. We're kind of kind of used to the staff helping the town get awards from the from the planning side of things, but to get one from the G I S, that's that's very interesting. And many congratulations on that. I don't believe we have any more upcoming events to show or is there something that we can put on the graphic screen here? Yes, we're exhorted to visit the appropriate link. So that we come to item 13 and look for anyone who would like to make a motion to adjourn.
This is Tim. Make a motion to adjourn.
Member Toterai, thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
This is Ken, second.
Member SAC, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. And perhaps Madam Secretary, you can go through the roll call to call the vote.
I need, okay. Member Acharia.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
The motion to adjourn is passed unanimously.
I will therefore bang the virtual gavel and declare the meeting finished. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.